Very nice. All due to show. So we're gonna, um, do I open the public hearing now?
We, there's no public hearing on this one, just that's publicly heard, but so.
There's no, no.
We don't have any new additions, so you wanna ask if there's anyone that wants to speak.
Okay, so is there anyone out there who would like to speak? Well, Mr. Wodenski.
Well, Peter.
What a pleasure. Long time no see.
Yeah, good to see you.
Good to see you.
I'm here just to remind the board that nothing has happened. And they're still flying down the dome. And just to keep you abreast for the subject.
I gotta tell ya, I was up around there a couple of times over the weekend and that road that you live on, they do fly down that road. But the one over where the, where the elk park is, that other road?
Yeah.
That comes down, they don't come as fast down around there, and I don't know why. It's, they're almost parallel with each other, right? Really?
I don't know. Because they're busy looking to see if they can find elk. So they're very slow.
Oh, well, maybe that's what you should.
Maybe we should put some elk up there somewhere.
Put a bird sanctuary there or something. Sasquatch sighting, you know, local Sasquatch viewers.
Slow elk crossing.
Bigfoot.
Well, did we ever.
So I'm sure that everybody's still working on the problem. We're still trying to get the speedometer thing. That's all I can tell you.
I appreciate what you're doing. Have you communicated with the county?
I've communicated with state and county, but I can't say so directly with that, dealing directly with that. But they're aware of it. I, from what I understand from what the mayor had talked about before, that they're, they're well aware of it. I honestly, I don't have an answer for you, Peter. I feel like I'm talking to my wife. I don't have an answer. Sorry. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
And they are, they are writing tickets.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm wondering, when you write the tickets, is mostly out of town people?
Uh, for a while it was locals. They were going, traveling, and, you know, they're going over back to Tyro, or even, you know, Toba. Um, there was a lot of locals there.
I was gonna say, usually word gets around and they, you know, they slow down, but out of town people, they don't, they don't have a clue. Alright. So we're gonna make a motion to approve the minutes?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting held on July 1st, 2025.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we will move now to department reports. Make a motion. Do we do that?
Yep. No, I normally make the motion first, then say, we don't do that, but that's not supposed to be done.
Okay.
So make a motion.
Make a motion to open the, the department reports.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Now you can talk.
Discussion.
Further discussion?
Yes.
So you go down the list now.
Okay, Parks.
Um, the exchange I had in mind is, I'd heard from that who are the strongest up here today, that they found another venue for that date.
I know, I was so disappointed.
Yeah, so, but then she threw out a January date.
Yeah.
Which I was a little confused about, because I emailed back about the weather, and she brought up rain or shine, and we're not snow, freezing temperatures, but.
Well, maybe that's the fun of it.
More follow up to do with her, Steve.
January?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they asked her to the inside outside of that, and she said, well, it's outside rain or shine, but I was wondering if January could park, you know, it was cold.
See how tough they really are.
That's a strong man.
Yeah, so we can remove that.
Alright, we're removing that from the voting items, then. So, number E is out.
I, I was really excited about it, I think things like that are great.
And the other thing I put out today could be, post-holiday reasons, the park, we're supposed to start last Friday, it's gonna be best Friday, but I see it's supposed to rain all weekend. So I'll move that to the year he signed up.
Oh, you're gonna do it, but inside?
What movie are showing? What movie are they, are you gonna be showing?
Um, it's gonna be Moana 2. And I think August 1st, we're proposing correlating the next movie with the Skyler County baseball, and we have the ball fields there.
Oh, cool.
And I think that's gonna be.
What is it?
Bad News Bears.
Oh, the Bad News Bears.
Mm-hmm. The original, or the up to the version?
Well, I think it's more the original.
Oh, yeah, Walter Man. Heard that, heard the bug story.
Yeah, that's what I'm learning.
I'm, I'm out there.
That'd be pretty cool.
That's where they should have the guys with the stones carrying those around, because they could sit in the stands there and watch them.
Well, that's what we got, the way they can set the stands, and they're gonna open their concession stand for it.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Nice.
Is there any other, further info on the roof, or you going to put the sign on the roof? Remember where you left off, or he was gonna.
He's gotta go to zoning.
He's gotta go to zoning.
Oh, is that what you're doing? Okay.
Yeah, I saw that email, that was yesterday or today, did that get, is he speaking directly to you by the front, or did he?
I haven't heard anything else.
I heard the last I talked to him was for the last board meeting, I told him he needed to get, you know, a contractor or something through the, through the board lot. And I guess he has his own contracting business, he's mature enough to have a job, and so he'll provide that. He said he did either provide it to me or you, but can't hear anything.
I think he's gotta get a permit, right?
He's gotta get his own bearings. We just went through this with Verizon, uh, the Verizon Honor hearing, put a sign and moved over, uh, here on Franklin Street, that subway. And they denied that because it's, it's, uh, closed against its own law.
Yeah, plus they got that marked, that sign that has all the store things there anyway, too.
Yeah, and there were, there were other options available to Verizon, and they didn't, soon they.
What time does he open down there? What, what time does he open down there? I just had a curiosity.
Um, I don't know, honestly.
So we can recognize.
It's on the page.
It's not real early.
Yeah, it's not real early.
No.
You know, probably 11 o'clock, they'd say, for lunch. I see it's a little, that food park, there's a concession stand up there. Um, I think the other thing, the double meetings classes that they approved, they're extending through September 17th, so I guess that's a little over there.
They seem to like it.
Yeah.
Maybe I got.
And then Peter and I are meeting the Assembly of Us Committee tomorrow at the park, if we can hold off through.
Yeah, so I wonder, do we think, or maybe find out from them, and then if they need, then we'll go to Tommy if they need electric or anything like that, water?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll find out from them first, okay?
Yeah, 15, 16, the other that Thursday to Sunday, that's generally four days.
Yeah, four days.
Wow. That's a lot.
Well, that's, the vendor, or the ride company made them do that.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
So you see any updates on the parts for the water pump?
No, the last email I had to Elias was that, well, they did promote the fixer, but it, wherever part we had broken, he wasn't putting in. So they were sending a new part that had, setting the.
Yeah, so basically you're gonna send all new, the new guts for it.
So I don't have an update on that, but I got an email from Logan, um, that they're gonna come out, he said Wednesday or Thursday to, because they haven't put the replacement pieces on the playroom yet. Put those on, and then we had another broken piece. Yeah, and then we had another broken piece on that, it's by your left thing, so I asked him to recheck all the bolts on that.
So is that still broke?
Yes, till tomorrow or Thursday, I asked him to recheck everything on that.
So he doesn't feel that's a safety hazard, or anything, just that that one piece gave off?
I, I asked him to recheck it all, because it's one piece.
Well, my concern was, well, should we, should it be worked off? No, is it safe?
Yeah, it's alright.
Okay. Thanks, thanks. Streets, buildings and grounds?
Nothing bad. We're sealing tomorrow, we're starting sealing tomorrow, and we're running on Thursday.
Nice. I see that you also had, are conducting safety meetings, very good?
Yeah, in the morning we talk once a week.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, let's see, nobody's here for water. Electric, no one's here. Water, no one's here. Police! No. Sorry, fire department. They're not here.
Fred, can you send the video around to the fire department, see what's been upgraded?
Yeah, I picked up an email from Jason. Just what it looked like, what the car looked like.
What's that?
They smashed up or got in an accident with.
Oh, we still haven't gotten the info on that, the report from the state troopers yet.
No, up on the hill.
Oh.
What happened? The chief's car. Wasn't it?
Oh, no, no. Nobody knows anything. No, that was my, oh, that was Montour you're talking about?
So there was two. There was two incidents, one with the chief's vehicle.
Yeah.
And one, um, with the arrival of the, someone stuck the key in the.
Right.
That, which one are you talking about?
Yeah, the chief's cars.
Yeah, I saw, I, my understanding was no, no incident, that they barely clipped each other, that's the story I got anyways.
Did they clip?
Supposedly both parties agreed that.
And both parties said there was no damage, and walked out of it.
Was that a progress of them?
I'm still getting, gathering information, so I don't have all of it, but that's what I was, that's what I was told.
So the other one we're waiting on is Montour fault mutual aid.
From the state troopers, which is, the gentleman who proves that is on vacation apparently, so.
Dennis Coats?
Not going on, but, uh, we've got issues with, uh, 216 that you have, and since you've got the lawyer, that he requests that you send him to continue with the law, but procedures that the vacant again developed there. Have not heard anything back. Sent an email again yesterday, or the day before, and still haven't heard anything about that.
From our lawyer.
From our lawyer. I guess Fred should contact.
I have, I've heard from him, yeah. He might not.
In fact, drafted a couple of letters for, about the issue we have over on 12th Street, uh, with some baggage from Liz, and just to how to address those. We received a letter from, from his attorney, trying to state that the, the area that he put down, the old stone, is a permanent pervious service, according to definitions that I have. It is, he's also got a lot covered issue, it's covered more than that block, uh, that is a volunteer, and it's a state way of the main space. And there's still the issue with the sidewalk, he hasn't compared that yet, over there. And, uh, the vacant building, they're trying to say that it's not a vacant building, according to our definitions, but, depends on how you interpret it, I guess. My interpretation, most of your mine is. Within, within, uh, that is considered a vacant building, so there's a safe, and it is unfit for human occupancy, so we can't occupy it, so make it.
Okay.
We should be, we have vacant building registry locked in the village, which I'm trying to address. And make sure that, that we have all the vacant buildings in the village area, locked, and letters go off. I want to get them all logged, and send all the letters off at once. I think there's a few more that I'm missing.
So is that around 13, or was that, was that throughout the whole county?
No, in the village, it's about 13, actually. And there's a couple I don't, I'm not sure of whether they're vacant, um, and a couple that I haven't actually logged, because they, I wanted to go and look at it first. But within the county, there is, I just did a little portion of the, of ready the other day, and in that small portion, they had nine or 10 in there. You know, it's like from town line road over to Firewood Road. There's, there's a lot more of the, of the, of the. And I don't know about the other side.
I don't care, it's only just the village.
Yeah, I think it's about 15 or so.
Okay, that's it? Thanks.
Still, you know, trying to get something done on 7th Street, on 307th Street, and she hasn't responded to any of the other limiting violations over there.
Oh. Did you check on the windows on the corner of Porter and Ninth?
I looked at, I saw one of them.
On, directly on the other side, I think, there's one open in the back, too. Up, upstairs.
Yeah, I haven't gotten over there.
I don't know if that's something that, you know, you let people in there to, to do some work, and they open the windows, or they're using it to?
I, I think they opened the windows to, to manually, uh, that, that, it was, the smell up there was horrendous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just was, wanted to make sure that they weren't using it to get in the place.
No, I don't think they are. And I haven't heard anything from, uh.
Neighbors?
Neighbors, they, they're not complaining about it right now, I think the grass needs to be better than milk. But, uh, the person buying the building, I haven't heard whether he's actually, whether he's actually on it. One sec, let's, right, his claim is supposed to be medical.
They just requested the tax information on that today, and they're, they're moving forward.
Okay, that's good, I just hope he follows suit, because other projects.
Okay, got it? Thanks. Can you send your dad the name for us? We're still trying to get fired up with the T2?
Yeah, we were talking to Fred yesterday, we're like, we're getting closer and closer, a couple of fine things are coming through, and we're.
We have a delay on the, the financial, the merchant, um, had, had to open up a new merchant account for that specifically, so we're waiting for that final approval from them.
So are we, are we waiting to hire somebody for that?
I got my first one today.
You did?
It just came, yeah, it came in like an hour ago, so I'll have to send it off to everyone, but, I got one application. I didn't look at it, I just got, saw, I saw it pop up, Charlene, so I was like, I was like, yay, and we were just talking about it, so. One application so far, it hasn't been that long, so.
That's it? Alright, so I guess, what, we need a motion to approve?
Need to vote on the reports, close it out. So all in favor?
All in favor? Board reports? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
Alright.
Voting items?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Local Government Support Services to reconcile financials and prepare the annual financial report for fiscal years ending May 31st, 2024 and 2025. Total proposed services net to exceed a fee of $16,500.
I'll second that. Further discussion?
Yeah, so Fred, if we pass this, when do they start the topic?
I don't have the exact date, they said they, they'd start pretty quickly, so I won't know until I can actually talk to them and give them a okay, and then they can tell me what their schedule's gonna be. They're gonna have to work with us on getting all of our login systems and stuff, the login information set up into our pair system, and they need baking access, and.
So can you ask them what the timeline is?
Yep. As soon as, as soon as we send this back off to them approved, then they'll give me the timeline.
I can say this, it's urgent, and they know it's urgent.
I know that, but we're gonna vote on something, and we don't even know what the timeline is.
She told me that she, she figured she could get this done in six months, is what she told me, but that's, they, I haven't seen everything either, so, I've heard that before, but they believe.
I'm just trying to understand it, because now you're saying that they should have it done within six months?
When they, when she talked to me, she said, we can probably get you cleaned up and get both your AFRs done in six months. That's how fast they.
This is only a 40-hour job.
Yeah, well, I don't know if that means they're doing 40 straight hours, I don't know what they're, what they're doing, I can't tell you, that's why I'm, we're hiring them, because it's their expertise, not mine.
The 40 hours stretched out into six months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they may do certain small work or whatever, I don't know, but, um, they gotta go through and do the reconciliations, and once they do that, they can do a trial balance, they can get the trial balance, they can do an AFR, so. They're very aware, I gave them in detail what, what we need.
Alright, good. That's sort of weird, they, I mean, that's not in here, they're saying that it's gonna take six months, but in here it says, it's gonna take them approximately 40 hours.
Right. Maybe less, I, I don't know, I mean, they, they can't give us a, a timeframe without getting any knowing what, what we're doing. But, I mean, we can sit and wait, and it's not gonna do us any good.
No, not at all.
You gotta do it.
And we have already had our, our pump station in the food park suspended.
Yeah, what's our timeline for the?
For what?
So if we get this done within six months, are we still okay with the timeline for the state?
We can't do anything with the state until we get the AFRs done, so until they get the AFRs done, we don't go any further with, with the grants.
Then they say something like they, they would assist in all that, and give them things back in track, on track?
They're going to get our financials in order, and then we'll go back to Municipal Solutions, picking up the application process and doing what they do. The letter that we sent to, like, R and D, we made it clear to them that we want to continue the application once we're able to provide what they need from us.
So there's no, there's, right now, there's no time as to when they're gonna start, but they know that we need them to start.
We went over exactly what we need done.
Right.
And this is the, this is the proposal they came back with, so this is what they're saying, they can, they can do.
No, I appreciate that, Fred, thanks, but it doesn't say six months in here.
No, it doesn't.
It says six months. But this is saying we're gonna get built for 40 hours.
Right.
So if they engage this, we're done, right? We're caught up with all reconciliations.
I hope so, that's what it should be.
By the time they're done with it, by the time they're done with this whole process, yes.
They're doing all past reconciliations.
I hope so, I mean, if we're gonna engage in this, is this gonna be complete?
That's, that's what they're doing, is they're going to reconcile the two fiscal years that they mentioned in their proposal.
I say I hope so, because I can't speak for them.
And then it's, but then we're caught up, we're done.
If we go, I mean, if it's the proposal.
Those are the, yeah, those are the two fiscal years, we're, we're not ahead of that.
And then we reengage the state with our other initiatives.
Yeah, we're gonna reengage the state, the state as soon as the first one's done, the 24, because that's all that they requested of us. Our 25 is due now, so they'll do the 24, get that squared away, and once they do that and the AFR is available, we can actually have the auditors come in and start the audit, which would be nice. And then while they're doing that audit, they can finish up this next round.
But if, if this is a proposal and we approve it, then doesn't that make the, does that make the proposal, like, you know, clad, iron, iron clad, that?
They'll agree to do up, up to what they're saying in here, which is up to 9,900 for the AFR for the 24, and then 6,600.
But the, the hours itself, it's not, like, if they go over the 40 hours?
They can't go past.
We propose not to exceed, okay.
Right.
Alright, so that helps.
If they have to go over for some reason, then they can't go any further without your approval.
Right.
Is there a contract that you, Fred, is this their?
This is all that they've set for now.
This is at time of materials?
They're gonna hook, they're gonna hook remotely, so they have a team that is widespread, everybody works remote, and so they all have their own special, um, responsibilities, um, but they, they will connect remotely to our systems, the little computer to, next to my desk, I'm gonna set that up for them. They're gonna connect that remotely and be able to access our systems to be able to do the work, so it'll be like having another staff member in there doing all the past stuff, but I don't know he's working on the future.
Did you review any references, Fred?
No, the reference I got was from Municipal Solutions, which is probably the most credible person we can get from.
Any, any further discussion? Steven, satisfied?
I'm just asking questions, people.
I know. So you're satisfied with your questions?
I didn't have any more questions.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Alright. Approve supervisory for electric Tommy Ballard's attendance? Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the supervisor of electric, Tommy Ballard's attendance to the 2025 MEAU Annual Conference at the Turning Stone Resort in Roanoke, New York, on October 1st to 3rd, 2025. Registration's $525, lodging to be determined at a later date.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
So I just got in right before we came up here, um, Jennifer got the quote for two nights, it's $438 for the lodging. Just so you know.
Should we add that in?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just stated it, so you guys know, it's fine, I mean, you know to approve it or not approve it.
Further discussion, anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Next, uh.
I'll make, oh.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution designating Tom Ballard as delegate for the Village of Atkins Land for purposes of voting at the MEUA campus.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the Santa Lake event center application by Skyler County State DWI Program, New York State State DWI Foundation, for a training event to be held on September 17th, 2025, 8:30 to 3:30 PM, to include a waiver of the rental fee.
I'll second that. Discussions?
Um, Ethan, is your crew going? Or some?
I saw that email, or that on the agenda and.
So, my only question is, could we hold it at the community center? Do they, did they specifically, I'm sure they probably did, but?
Yeah, specifically, we have a center, so. And in September, so, so weekday, so I mean, it's not, it's not with, and, and central. But the wedding, everything I thought of.
Can't say I'd be right.
I think sort of it was on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but it was on Wednesday.
Hey, how many people can fit in there?
Um, if it's like a seated, a table, you know, we usually back to around 160.
Okay.
Um, but if they're gonna have a work conference, uh, we can go over to, on the, there's chairs.
Just the chairs. Any further discussion? All in favor?
So before you vote, sorry, um, just wanna make sure this is to include the waiver, so you are gonna waive the fee, I just wanna make sure that's clear, that.
We, we said that, that, to include a waiver of the rental fee.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, that is, because.
It's on the. Yeah.
Just clarify.
That was my question.
Alright, just wanna make sure.
Alright.
It just, it was, it was a topic of conversation earlier, so I just wanna make sure that I'm putting it down right.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Excuse me. You got crossed off.
Ethan got crossed off, so I have approval of special events application?
Make a motion to approve a special event application for a modest amount tour Watkins Glen Wrestling Camp to be held on July twenty sixth from one to three P M.
A second. Discussions?
Where are they doing, where are they doing that?
They're doing it at the lakefront, right?
Yeah.
At the volleyball.
They just take down the nets and they just do it outside in the sand.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's big water for many, this weekend, so.
They did that last year.
Sunday looks beautiful.
They did that last year, right?
They did.
Did they have a good turnout, do you remember?
They did a turnout, the kids liked it, just basically, cause they, they don't really use the campuses or anything, but it gets them out for the day, you know, outside.
Very nice. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Prove application request for the maple tree.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a request to remove the maple tree in front of the house at two hundred seventh street by Thomas and Elizabeth Floodgood.
A second. Discussion?
Background information, oh, I don't have any pictures.
Right here.
Has anybody looked at it? Tommy's looked at it?
Everybody's looked at it.
I feel bad for the tree, but it's.
It, it got trimmed once sometime ago, Scott, you can jump in, I think you know some, but, and then the last two.
Scotty, what have you guys done with it?
We, we trimmed it, I think, three or four years ago, the top out of it, and then we let it go.
Was it all dead, the top?
Yeah.
And the last two storms knocked the crap a little more down.
Also, that's not from our trimming, that's from the storms.
It's just losing limbs.
Losing limbs? So what do you think, we can, should be able to chop it down, hey? Yeah, that's how I feel.
Yeah. Can I might just see?
Could I, could I be recognized?
Sure can.
Thank you. I, yeah, it's lost two, like, really huge limbs, the last two undershirts and. I have a neighbor across the street who normally parks his car like right there, and thank goodness on that one day when that big, big one came down, he was parked elsewhere, otherwise it would, would have been really ugly. And I, I don't know how, you know, what your schedule is, but it's probably, it's the electric part, it's all, it'll make you look busy, probably busy as all get out, but of course we have this event coming up on Sunday with the porch pass. And I would wait for someone to be standing under that tree and, or to drop a limb, especially if it get rain over the weekend. If there's any way that it can be done, like during the remainder of this week, I, I think it's in everybody's interest.
Well, we could check with Tommy to see if maybe he could just, maybe not cut the whole thing down right now, but maybe the limbs?
I mean, that would work.
We can throw that out there, I don't know if you, I'm not saying he can, but it's all up to him, I guess, how busy, what, what else they got going on. It's worth a try, as long as you can say is no.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure you get people all the time asking if it'd be a priority. I, I would not ask for this if I didn't think that it's very dangerous.
Correct. I'll see if, can we?
So know that Tommy will be gone the rest of the week, he's not here.
Oh, he's not here.
Yeah, you'd have to, pretty much, I mean, I, I.
Who's next?
Does he put Dale in charge when he's gone?
Dale, he's the one who wanna talk.
You'd have to talk to Dale.
So we, I'll try to reach out to Dale, see, can you at least go down, take a look at it?
At least one, leave the name drunk or they can't get all this one up.
Any further, any further discussion? Uh, so I guess we're voting on whether it's, we can cut it down, right, give them permission to cut it down?
Yep, they're requesting to have it cut down.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thanks, Tom.
All right, we need a motion to approve the general audit.
I'll make a motion to approve the general audit dated July twenty first, twenty twenty five for the total amount of five hundred one thousand five hundred ninety nine dollars eighty seven cents.
A second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie? All right, more concerns?
Well, I, I had written about, a, a resident came to me asking if there was anything that we could do to recognize Rose Chacon for all the years that she organized the Tuesday concerts for the park. And I, I sent out an email to everybody and, you know, I don't know how, how we could do it, but I just wanted to just bring that to everybody's attention. I thought it was a nice idea, Rose organized those concerts for many, many years.
Was she the originator of that?
Yes, she was, and it's interesting, cause the resident that.
Oh.
They did name the pavilion?
No, I said, why not?
Isn't it named after somebody else? Yeah, I think it's named after somebody else who.
I'm pretty sure it is.
It's a, they donated to, I can't pick who it is, but, you know, this person is, and, and the interesting part was that she started this when she was on the board, this is what the resident told me. And he brought over her vitriol, which did say she served on the board of, of the village. But the funny thing, and maybe this, maybe the rules have changed since Rose was on the board, but you can't, I mean, she went around to the businesses and we can't do that anymore. You can't solicit funds.
Well, you did give the grant case that.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying back in the day when Rose did it, I think she just kinda, she went around to the businesses and got the donate and stuff, which, I don't know, you know. I guess, it doesn't matter how she did it, that the, there was just, and he said there were some other older residents that felt that they, that it would be really appropriate to somehow recognize Rose, um, because she did start it and she continued it for many years. And, you know, I think it's a nice idea.
I think so too, and if there's something that you can come up with something?
Oh, there's a great, thank you, I should have included you in that mail message, I'm sorry.
Carrie, do you?
Yeah, like right now I'm giving the bands announce before they start the, uh, the.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's look into it, I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a nice idea, Rose is a big part of the community and, you know, yeah. So that's all I got.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, we started talking about it, the commercial lift that's sitting in front of, across from, on Mountain Market.
In front of the old movie theater.
You take, yeah, in front of the old movie theater, or the new movie theater, whatever they're doing there. But on the weekends, specifically like July fourth weekend, every day there is blocking anywhere from two to three parking spots. I think it's one to two.
Or, I think it was.
I'm not sure, but it just, I don't know what our policies are, and Ethan, maybe you can chime in and help out, it's just like, on a weekend, I get it, it's a construction job, but how long does this go on?
What are they doing there?
They're just parking a large man lift, taking up.
No, no, but what do they, what's?
I haven't seen it do anything.
Oh, they're not, so.
I don't know.
Oh.
But it's taking up two parking spots out on the main thoroughfare of our community.
Yeah.
Granted, I'm, I'm all for businesses improving, it's just like maybe on the weekends? I don't know if we have anything that states, hey, you've gotta move it off down to the side street, I don't know.
Parking, I know that, but again, we haven't enforced that in a while with staffing in or especially if it has a rain in their system. So you can ask them, there's, there's nobody else for, for days or weeks on end, so I wonder if I ask them, wherever, what's the business they're working on?
The movie theater.
Movie theater.
That big man lift that they have there.
So what, you said, so there's a two hour parking limit on the streets too?
Yeah.
I thought that was just in the municipal parking lots.
That's all down.
All of this, there's signs all the way down.
So, but regardless of two hour parking, it's just, it's tying up parking spots, I just don't know if we have a policy.
And especially on the weekends when nobody's, when they're not working on it.
Well, it's actually, I was two hour parking, otherwise I support and look into other things that maybe buy that, like for a whole weekend that night, but otherwise, I'm gonna move it out to a two hour parking.
Okay.
Well, why don't we just ask them, say, hey, can you, why, why don't, why don't we ask them, can you just move it for the weekend, on the weekends?
That's what I should.
I'm just seeing what folks say, it's just like a couple people asked me about it and then I've seen.
So they'd be allowed to put it across the street where the, um.
Oh, where the, where the empty lairs?
They'd have to get permission.
Who would they get permission from?
That's the racing museum.
Racing museum.
They, they own it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's my understanding they own it.
Yeah, yes, they do, they own it.
They bought that, yeah.
I did notice they moved it around the corner the other day, but did they move it back out front again? What, I have never seen anybody doing it.
They know they put in the windows, I don't know if they're repointing it right.
Yeah, like I said, it's not, I love to see the businesses making things better here.
Every time I come by, they.
I'm with you, I don't, I don't, it's just really the being.
It's been months.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I, I don't, I don't think it's. It sits there all week.
A stand.
A stand.
I don't see anything wrong with, does even move all day or day. I don't see anything wrong with blatantly asking them to at least move it on the weekends when it's busy.
Well, that's what you're saying, that's the only time they do work on it, is on the weekends?
I, yes.
Oh, he does, oh, okay.
I'm not saying he is, but he works the normal job during the week, so I think on the weekends he's, um.
Doing that? Then move it during the week.
So we have them working on it on the weekends when there's people walking in.
And it's kinda like, I don't know.
I, I gotta tell you the truth, I've never seen anybody doing anything.
Maybe somebody should go talk to the owner.
I don't know if it's a long time I go through there or what.
To see what's up.
Yeah, we can ask. Dennis?
Are you on that, Ethan? What'd you say?
I tell it. I, I can check in, I can check in on him.
Well, she's, she's looking to, to renew her permit, which has been expired for a year. And that's a real, to redo, finish doing what you started. I've been going through some of her plans and stuff, to try to figure out what's going on. But she has something to do, she wants to know when you confirm.
So who's gonna talk?
So you're gonna check with her then?
I'll check.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Just getting that parking thing up in the park over there, that's money. The park, parking. Oh, the T two thing? Yeah. Bueno.
Yeah. A little bit snagged, but we're, we're getting there.
Stace, the only thing I'm along with that is, if you get a chance to do a safety thing with it, with your help, I still notice that those guys are stopping the cars out close to the road and people get frustrated because they're saying, so they try to, they all try to turn in there and they're, and some, the other day there was three cars there and one of the cars is blocking the main highway.
Like it's gonna be internet, is the reason why, but, and it's hard, cause right now, I, I still wait for an extra internet out there.
No.
Cause we're already, we're on this crazy.
No, but.
Hopefully in a few weeks, that's because we have credit card readers, the credit card reader won't read if they're by the shed.
After buying, oh, so they have to be, oh.
So they have to be close to the road to get closer.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was the other way around, that's why I kept saying, well, tell them to move closer to the shed, oh my god.
Now, if they go to the shed, then that credit card reader will read.
Oh goodness.
Was it run on the wifi?
So probably if we were, you know, it'd have to be something else.
Okay, hopefully we won't have to deal with it.
Hopefully we're almost.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
They do agree to deal with it.
Anything else, anybody? Okay. So I think, um, we're gonna go into executive for some personal, personnel issues.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Have a good evening, you guys.
Thanks, thanks y'all, I appreciate it.